Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 24th, 2013 City Commission Meeting. Before we start, I'll invite Reverend Poole forward to offer a prayer, and we will follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone will please stand.
Let us pray. God of the universe, our Father, you are from everlasting to everlasting. We thank you for life and opportunity for this city and nation. We gather here at this commission meeting to entertain the business of our city. We pray for guidance as we accept the responsibility of deliberation for the business decisions. Guide each one, citizen and commissioner, manager and mayor, as they seek direction for the governing. We are grateful to you for the years of leadership Brian Mizzaid has provided to our city. As he retires from this responsibility to live a more leisurely life with family and friends, we pray that our blessings will fall upon him. And we ask, dear Lord, that you would give the new city manager direction for the future health of the city as he works with leadership and staff. May the future for all be that which is prosperous for everyone. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend.
Thanks.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Markowski?
Here.
Mayor Galeran?
Here. Thank you. Before we get into the meat of the business, I would like to move on to honors and awards for an obvious reason. A bittersweet evening for me, and I think for most of us. And as you're well-versed in taking direction from me, why don't you follow me up here I actually first came to know Brian Mizzaid and his wife Sharon, I think it was prior to Jake being born. I was new to the organization of a neighborhood association in NIMs, and Brian was the assistant manager at the time. And we started talking around 1992, and we haven't stopped. And it's been a wonderful, a wonderful friendship and an honor working with Brian and his staff, and with that, serving you, the citizens of the city of Muskegon. Brian has been recognized not only at the local level, but also his transition has been noted at the national level, if I can get my dials and dishes in order here. According to the Congressional Record proceeding in debates of the 113th Congress, first session, House of Representatives recognizing Brian Mizzaid's 19 years as city manager of Muskegon, the Honorable Bill Heisinga of Michigan, in the House of Representatives of July 31st, 2013, writes, "Mr. Heisinga of Michigan, Mr. Speaker, I rise today to recognize Brian Mizzaid and his over 19 years of commendable service to Muskegon, Michigan as their city manager. Brian grew up in Muskegon and graduated from Reese Puffer High School. After earning a master's in public administration from Western Michigan University, Brian stayed in West Michigan to serve his community. He quickly earned a reputation in West Michigan as a hard-working and reliable city manager for both Coopersville and New Wego. Brian had the opportunity to return to his hometown of Muskegon in 1994 and has served as the city manager ever since. Muskegon is a place where families and businesses can thrive. A city of 38,000 people and 1,100 businesses, Muskegon is representative of Michigan as a manufacturing hub, popular beach town, and close-knit community. Brian certainly played a large role in making Muskegon what it is today. During his 19 years as the city manager for Muskegon, Brian tackled challenging projects that revitalized his hometown. To name just a few, Brian oversaw the implementation of the Muskegon Lake Express, Lake Michigan's first high-speed cross-lake ferry. He also spearheaded improvements to Elsie Walker Arena, helped establish two Grand Valley State University facilities in Muskegon, developed Shoreline Drive and Bluffton Bay Estates, created many beautiful miles of bike trails, and encouraged countless other development projects, improving the economy while showcasing Muskegon's natural beauty on the shores of Lake Michigan. Brian recently announced that he will retire in October, capping 19 notable years as Muskegon city manager. His tenure in a position that rarely has longevity speaks volumes about his managing skills and ability to work with commissioners and staff for the good of the people. While Brian will no longer be Muskegon city manager, he will continue to play a prominent role in the city that he dedicated decades to. I ask my colleagues to join me in honoring city manager Brian Mizzaid for his service in Muskegon and throughout West Michigan. It was signed by U.S. Representative Bill Heisinga, who wishes Brian all the best. And this was read into the Congressional Record, and if you want to look it up online, Now, they didn't say anything about him joining anybody in the statuary hall, although I'd love to see a statue of Brian. The state of Michigan also honors Mr. Mizzaid. Senator Jeff Hanson, Senator of the 34th District, presented the special tribute. And let it be known that it is with deep appreciation for the hard work, dedication, and professionalism that city manager Brian Mizzaid has put forth on behalf of the people of Muskegon that we offer this expression of our thanks and best wishes. As the people of Muskegon recognize the loyalty and devotion to public service of this conscientious individual, we add our sentiments of gratitude for a job well-done and best wishes for a happy retirement. There's a lot of reiteration. We already know where you graduated, okay? But Brian and his wife Sharon have given much of their time and talent to accomplish great things for their community. They have served as positive role models for their son Chris and daughters Laura and Lindsay. God, they grow up fast. During this tenure, miles of bike trails were added, the Muskegon Farmers Market will be relocated, and many businesses were developed. There can be little doubt that the record of Brian's service as city manager will continue to reap rewards for the Muskegon community. We offer our thanks on this personal milestone. In special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to join with the citizens of Muskegon in saluting Muskegon city manager Brian Mizzaid. In acknowledgement of his outstanding years in public service, we wish him a happy and healthy retirement. This is signed. State Senator Jeff Hanson, State Representative Marsha Hubby Wright, and Governor Rick Snyder. Let it be known, is with a great sense of admiration and respect for all the contributions he has made on behalf of the people of the city of Muskegon, that we salute Brian L. Mizzaid. Brian received his bachelor's degree, we know where he went to school.
Say it.
Well, he did. He earned his master's in public administration from Western Michigan University. I'm a Chippewa. I don't care. He returned to his hometown with his wife Sharon and three children to serve as assistant city manager, having previously served the communities of Coopersville and New Wego as manager. Within a short time, he rose to the position of city manager for the city of Muskegon and never had a dull moment because I was calling him all the time. In his 19-plus years of service, Brian Mizzaid has demonstrated he has the courage necessary to make tough decisions and understands the important role he has played in making the city of Muskegon a wonderful place to live, to work, and raise a family, and to build those friendships. He led the city through a transitional time, including the development of Shoreline Drive, building two Grand Valley State University facilities, the addition of the popular bike trails, the former mall redevelopment, improvements to the Elsie Walker Arena, development of Bluffton Bay Estates, the cross-lake ferry, and most recently upgrades to the water filtration plant, which allowed for a water agreement with the city of Norton Shores and Fruitport Township, as well as the relocation of the farmers' market to the downtown area. Through his tenure as city manager for the city of Muskegon, Brian has proven his ability to lead employees and citizens while keeping his decision-making process at the center of what is best for the entire organization. The superb leadership he has brought to the city of Muskegon and the vast array of talents and abilities merits nothing less than our highest tribute. In special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to honor Brian L. Mizzaid for his 19 years of outstanding service as city manager to the commission, citizens, and employees of the city of Muskegon. May he know of our admiration and warmest wishes for a future filled with health and happiness. Once again, thank you, my friend.
On to business. May we have the consent agenda, please.
Approval of minutes, city clerk, summary request. To approve minutes of the September 9th Commission Work Session Meeting and the September 10th City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Valve replacement project, high-service pumps, Public Works, summary request. Authorize staff to enter into an agreement with Northern Boiler and Mechanical Contractors for replacement of an 18-inch and 14-inch ball valve on high-service pumps number one and number three, as well as the addition of an isolation valve on both pumps. Staff recommendation, staff recommends acceptance of the bid from Northern Boiler and Mechanical Contractors for $121,775. Consideration of bids for S664 Austin Lift Station Rehabilitation Engineering, summary request. Award the Austin Lift Station Rehabilitation Project S664 to Jackson Merkey out of Muskegon, Michigan, since they were the lowest responsible bidder, with a total bid price of $202,845. Staff recommendation, award the contract to Jackson Merkey. Authorization to firm for zoning ordinance update, planning, and economic development. Summary request, staff is seeking authorization to hire and execute all documents for the selected planning firms, Netter Veldt and Williamson Works, to accomplish the task of updating the city of Muskegon zoning ordinance. The update will focus on incorporating form-based codes into the downtown area, a parking plan, and to also better define uses on the downtown lakeshore. The two consultants will be working together to complete the project. Staff recommendation, approval to select Netter Veldt and Williamson Works as the consultants, and for staff to be authorized to execute all contracts and documents. West Michigan Metropolitan Transportation Planning Program, West Plan Dues, for fiscal year 2014, from October 1st, 2013 through September 30th, 2014, city manager. Summary request, to approve the city of Muskegon's portion of the West Plan Dues payable to West Michigan Shoreline Regional Development Commission. This agency determines projects and distributes federal transportation funds. Staff recommendation, to approve this request. Permanent traffic control order, designate one on-street parking space as a handicap parking on Second Street, Public Works. Summary request, approve the traffic control order authorizing staff to designate an existing on-street parking space and install a handicap parking sign and handicap pavement parking on the northeast side of Second Street between Western Avenue and Clay Street. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to designate an existing on-street parking space and install a handicap parking sign and handicap pavement marking on the northeast side of Second Street between Western Avenue and Clay Street. Cemetery utility cart, Public Works. Summary request, authorize staff to purchase one Coyote Metron utility cart from J&amp;J Farms, the lowest qualified bidder. This machine will replace the 1995 model currently being used. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to purchase one Coyote Metron utility cart from J&amp;J Farms. Signing of 2003-2004 Subrecipient and Community Housing Development Organization agreements, Community Neighborhood Services. Summary request, to direct staff to have the subrecipient agreement for the following agencies signed by the mayor and clerk. The funding allocations were approved by the commission in June of this year. Love Inc. through $3,500 wheelchair ramps and $4,500 utility assistance. Also to have the Community Housing Development Organization agreements signed for the following agencies. Bethany Housing Ministries, DBA, Community and Compass, $60,000. Habitat for Humanity, $36,000. Trinity Housing Ministries, $30,000. Staff recommendation, to direct staff to have documents signed by the mayor and clerk. Committee recommendation, all of the allocations were previously approved by the commission. Police Cruisers, Public Works. Summary request, authorize staff to proceed with the procedure of six, the purchase of six Chevy Caprice Cruisers from Betten Chevrolet for $167,316. While Shaheen Chevy's state bid of $166,608 was the lowest bid received, Betten is being recommended since their bid of $167,316 is within 1% of the local preference. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to proceed with the purchase of six Cruisers from Betten Chevrolet. Police SUVs, Public Works. Summary request, authorize staff to purchase three Ford police SUVs from Great Lakes Board, the lowest qualified bidder. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to purchase three Ford police SUVs from Great Lakes Board. Request to fly breast cancer ribbon flags, city clerk. Summary request, Tempting Tables is requesting permission to fly breast cancer ribbon flags the week of October 14th at the following locations. Hackley Park, City Hall, Shoreline Drive, Central Fire Station, Hart Shore Marina, and Root Park. Staff recommendation, approval. Towing contract extension for Ramos Towing Services, Public Safety. Summary request, the director of Public Safety requests that the city commission review and consider approving a contract extension with our current service provider, Ramos Towing. Currently, Ramos provides towing, impoundment, storage services for the city of Muskegon. Ramos Towing has been under authorized contract services for towing for the last three years, from September 25th of 2010 to September 24th of 2013. Staff is currently reviewing the current contract and preparing a competitive bid process to select an acceptable towing service. Ramos Towing is willing to extend towing services for three months through December 24th of 2013 and/or until a new contract can be established, approved, not to exceed one year per contract language. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of this extended towing contract agreement until a new contract is accepted. Appointments to Local Officer Compensation Commission, city clerk. Summary request, there are two openings on the Local Officers Compensation Committee, which need to be filled prior to October 1st, 2013. Greg Borman has expressed an interest in serving on this board, and the city clerk is searching for an additional applicant. Staff recommendation, appointment of Greg Borman and an additional person to fill the vacancies.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agreement, or the assent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further consideration? Commissioner Markowski?
Item J.
Any others?
Item I also.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of items H, I, and J.
It has been moved by the vice mayor, seconded by Commissioner Wieringel, to accept the consent agenda as presented, minus items H, I, or J. Are there any comments or considerations? If not, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We'll go alphabetical.
Alphabetical, please.
You had items H and J, I believe?
Okay.
H and I? Okay.
All right. Which one was it? H and I? Okay. I move for the signing of the 2013-2014 Subrecipient and Community Housing Development Organization Agreement.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by the vice mayor, to approve the signing of the 2013-2014 Subrecipient and Community Housing Development Organization Agreements. Commissioner German.
Okay. I just kind of wanted to get more insight on this project and the organizations that funding would go to, and how is this project going, coming along with the, I guess, the service in the community?
Well, Love Incorporated, is that the one that you're?
Actually, I'm looking at Love Incorporated, and actually, I want to know a little bit about all of them.
Okay. Love Incorporated is one of our subrecipients. Probably two years ago is when we dropped it to one single subrecipient instead of several. We had close to 10 subrecipients that received about $1,500. And so, we felt at that time, because of the dwindling funds that we had, to best serve the community at large was to allow one subrecipient the opportunity to serve most of the community. And so, Love provides ramps to handicaps and to medically immobilized individuals in the city of Muskegon, and we also provide utility assistance to people in the city of Muskegon through Love Incorporated. The community housing development organizations are listed there. We haven't had Trinity Housing Corporation in a very long time. They kind of fell off the scene, and they've come back through the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Number Three through the county of Muskegon, and they are building and completing eight homes in the Oakview neighborhood right now. So they've sold four of the eight, and they're completing the last two. And so, they'd like to get back in the business with the city of Muskegon versus working directly with the county because that's a single allocation. And so, we did provide them with a small allocation because they're, we're waiting to see what they can do for us. Trinity, not Trinity, I'm sorry, Habitat for Humanity and Community and Compass are two CHODOs, is what we call them, that are familiar with most people. They've produced a lot of housing units for low-income families. So affordable housing is what our CHODO services are for. We're actually mandated to give 15%, and we usually give much higher than that because we see the need, and we also see that the city of Muskegon can't do it all, and there are organizations like Habitat and Community and Compass who can provide affordable housing units. So Community and Compass provides a lot of rental housing to low-income families, where Habitat provides homeownership to families under the 50% of the area median income. So that is a brief breakdown of what each of these organizations are going to do for us this year.
And my question for accident, because, you know, in the community, you know, I do know due to the situation of a recession, and I'm, you know, talk to citizens, and they're looking for help and services, you know, that they can turn to to become first home buyers and also not be homeless as well. So I just want to know, you know, the fact that, you know, the impact that these services are having to assist, you know, accommodate, you know, the needs for the citizens and homeless.
Absolutely. We've produced quite a number of affordable housing units because of the CHODOs that we use, especially through Community and Compass and Habitat. But we don't do so bad ourselves in Community and Neighborhood Services. We have just recently sold one of our homes this past week, so I'm excited about that. I think you approved that at the last commission meeting, and we have a big open house this coming Sunday. Yeah, this is great. So everybody out there, so that you can see what the city provides, the city of Muskegon provides affordable housing to families who want to purchase and live in the city of Muskegon, and we are proud to show off our house at 1500 Leahy. It is an absolute gorgeous three-decks on the, that you can walk out, so come and see it on Sunday. Green Ridge Realty is our realtor, and it will be listed on, I think it's already listed, actually. So if you're interested, come out Sunday, 1 to 3, 1500 Leahy. Otherwise, the commissioners and some of our other staff, we're, I would be glad to take you there personally to show it off. We did a very nice job.
Commissioner Markowski?
I was just going to add to this specific agenda item that the Citizen District Council did meet and go over the budget for the year, and met with all the applicants, and went over their projects and their plans, and then awarded our decision based on the merit of each of those projects and how much we really thought we were going to get out of it. So it wasn't just kind of a, you know, generic breakdown. We really felt that each of their projects, you know, were going to be able to provide something for us based on that.
And we did approve this as a commission in June, having received that material. Any other comments, questions? Not? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Anita, again. Item I?
Okay. Motion for police cruisers, Public Works.
I'll second that. Okay. It is moved by Commissioner German, seconded by the vice mayor, to authorize staff to proceed with the purchase of six Chevy Caprice Cruisers from Betten Chevrolet. Commissioner German.
Okay. My question is, I'm looking at the dollar amount for these cruisers, and actually, for the SUV. I want to know exactly where is this funding coming from, and the need and the purpose for that?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. O'Shuttell.
I'm sorry. Forgive me. I didn't hear the first one.
No, no. My question is, where's the funding coming from, and the need and the purpose for these vehicles? And the actual cruisers that we have now, are they actually outdated? Have they warrant their warrant for, you know, uses?
Okay. The budget, we, every year, we budget for a certain number of vehicle, cruisers replacement based on mileage and age. At the present time, we have a mileage of 115,000 miles plus 54 months of replacement, so we have to take that into account. After 15, after four and a half years, they become really ragged and not as well-prepared, and they cost us more in repairs and upkeep. The budget, the current budget does have nine utility vehicles, nine vehicles for replacement, and that's why we're coming before you for six cruisers and three utility vehicles that fit within the proposed budget or approved budget, excuse me.
Okay. Now, how often do you go beyond the lifespan of other vehicles?
Well, as of right now, I hate to admit it, but we are behind right now on mileage. I think the vehicles that, we have three Chevy Caprices that we're, I guess, preparing for replacement right now, that those vehicles that they are replacing, they have over 100,000 miles right now on them.
And I guess my last question for this, I'm sorry, Commissioner, is because I'm looking at the situation and incident that just happened over the weekend, and I'm looking at these dollars that could be allocated to hiring more police officers to, you know, to protect the communities and, you know, hire more officers. So, you know, that's my reasoning, to see if there's really a need right now to get these vehicles.
Couple of things, I guess, I'm going to touch on, and Mr. Mizzaid, and of somebody Couple of things, I guess, I'm going to touch on, and Mr. Masid and somebody else may want to jump in about the budget. Those, this is an enterprise fund. This is, this money is coming from the equipment fund. The Trinity does not fund or would not fund any police officers whether they're needed or not. I'm not, I'm not questioning the need or not need for them, but this is a separate fund that would not fund police officers.
Okay.
As far as they're needed, absolutely, they are needed. I mean, this is, we cannot wait. We're already behind in at least three cruisers right now. As of October of this year, we'll be behind by at least two vehicles that we need to get going. It took us forever to get those three Chevys that are in place right now, and it takes about three weeks to set them up, and we've got to replace those vehicles. We can't just leave them standing out here.
And that's why I wanted to know where the money was actually coming from?
Equipment fund.
All right, thank you.
We lease those to the police department.
Okay. Commissioner Hood?
Yeah, I just want to say, I can attest to 100,000 miles is, on a cruiser is not like 100,000 miles on our car. That's a lot of wear and tear, and a lot of times, you know, a cruiser goes through quite a lot of off-road driving sometimes. So when it reaches 115,000 miles, it's time for them to, to be switched out.
If I may add, because you're adding the island time, I mean, you've got to remember, it's not just the actual mileage on the vehicles, but the island time. I mean, you may have 100,000 miles on it, but the engine has probably almost, I don't want to say twice as much, in a number of hours on the engine itself, and that's what you really need to go by. But because we don't have a meter on the engine to measure the hours, we just go by the mileage.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to point out also, you know, a decade ago, when the state hadn't cut up the revenue sharing yet, we considered 80,000 miles in four years to be, as far as we could push vehicles and keep our officers safe and, and not have a situation where a vehicle's breaking down, when you, you really need it to be reliable. And because of budget, primarily because of state revenue sharing cuts, as you've heard, we've gone from 80,000 miles as our replacement threshold to 115. So I really think we've stretched as far as we can prudently go and probably a little past that. So, you know, I understand the need for officers. I've been a champion for maintaining as fully staffed department as we can, going back to when I first got into the local political arena. But you've got to have the equipment for those officers to use, and it's got to be safe and good working order. So I will be supporting this, this request. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Not? Roll call, please.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item J, Commissioner Markowski?
Yes, this is really just an informational request. I'm sorry. I motion to approve the item J, police SUVs through Public Works.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Markowski, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to authorize staff to purchase three Ford police SUVs from Great Lakes Ford. Commissioner?
This is really just more of an informational question for citizens, so I'm not sure if Mohammed would choose to answer or not. But I'm just curious as to the purpose and use of the SUV versus the cruiser. There's clearly a much more considerable cost, and I'm sure they have as equal a value, but I think it's helpful for citizens to understand what that role is as compared to a cruiser. This isn't really off-road territory, so I'd like to know.
Couple of things, if I may. I mean, the call, the initial cost is, is if you look at the individual, the unit cost, is actually less for utility vehicles than they are for the Caprices that we're proposing to buy, 25 versus 28 or 27, 28 some thousand dollars. So the actual initial cost is less. The engine is a little bit smaller. We're talking, the Caprices are V8, this is a V6, 3.7 liter for the utility vehicles versus a 6.0 liters for the Caprices. So fuel consumption is, we anticipate it to be about the same, if not less, on the utility vehicles. Those are utility vehicles that they have come, that Ford have come up with pursuit-rated vehicles. This is, I think, the first or second year that they have come up with utilities that can be utilized as cruisers for all practical purposes. We have had, if you recall, the last winter we had, and we've had a couple winters that it became tough for our police officers where they don't have, didn't have the equipment to, to, to perform their, their jobs, if you will, as, as best as they could. So they were stuck with snow, with the heavy snow that we had, and we, they ended up borrowing some of our DBW trucks, and I'm not so sure that was, you know, we need to keep with that process, if you will. We need, like you guys stated eloquently, that we need to provide them with the best tools available so we can expect the best of them as well.
So then, could you explain to me why we wouldn't just have all SUVs?
For the same exact reasons that I said why we're going with them, because they're brand new. We really don't have much history with them. They're, I think the only town that I'm aware of right now that has them around us is probably Norton Shores, and they have only one. We cannot put all of our eggs in one basket. We can't afford to do that right now with nine cruisers, and then all of a sudden, this, those are, you know, how with every brand-new product, there's some things that has to, that have to be worked out. So we're trying them and see if they work and satisfactory, maybe that's the route we go. Plus, we also decided we're going with the Chevy Caprices last, early this year as our cruisers, if you will, so.
So you do see in the future the possibility of switching over?
I do think it's possible, yes, ma'am.
Commissioner German?
Yeah, one of, the old vehicles, do you sell those or auction those off for, for the public or anything like that?
I think the Chiefs keep them, but, yes, we auctioned them on eBay. We had our own auction. We've held auctions in-house, and we've held auctions. We're talking to Grand Rapids Auction. We average about 2,000, between 2,000 and 4,000, depending on the conditions of those vehicles. But we do some, yes.
Any other questions, comments? Not? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, item A, please.
Liquor license request for Muskegon Moose Lodge, City Clerk. Summary request. The Liquor Control Commission is seeking local recommendation on a request from Moose, Muskegon Moose Lodge, number 2697. Loyal Order of Moose for a new club license with dance and entertainment permit to be located at 871 Pulaski Avenue. Staff recommendation, all departments are recommending approval.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we approve the liquor license request for the Muskegon Moose Lodge. Second.
It has been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Wieringel, to approve the liquor license request for the Muskegon Moose Lodge. Any questions or comments?
It's just good to see the Moose back in Muskegon.
It is. Very good to see the Moose back in Muskegon. Roll call, please.
Mayor, I believe we have somebody that wanted to speak on this item.
You don't have to if you don't want to, but you can.
Well, we need to have you approach and give your name and address, please.
Don Provo, Muskegon Moose Lodge, 87, 871 Pulaski. In regards to having our liquor license approved, there is a liquor license cost, and I'm under the understanding it's $2,500 for a liquor license for us, which I don't disagree with that if it was a Class C liquor license. We are a nonprofit organization, and we were kind of curious if there is a way of getting the board to look at lowering the cost or getting us in close with any other not-private organization liquor license?
At this juncture, you come under the same classification that's been used in our fee schedule of other people and businesses in your same situation.
Even though?
Yes, currently, it's 2,500. I had staff investigate and evaluate the, the current fee schedule, and groups such as yourself and other businesses fall under the same classification. So at this juncture, until such time that staff does a reevaluation and an adjustment to the fee schedule in the future, if that occurs, it is what it is at this point.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Item B, please. Oh, we do, don't we? How about a roll call, then?
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and the best of luck to the Moose, and again, great to see you back in service. Item B?
Blight Elimination Project Demolition Bids. Planning Economic Development. Summary request. The city of Muskegon obtained a 2013 blight fight elimination grant to be used for the demolitions of 510 Ottawa Street and 1875 Waterworks Road. The contract between Michigan Land Bake Fast Track Authority and the city of Muskegon has been signed by the mayor. The bids for the demolition have been received. Our consultant, Evan Marchy, is recommending the city commission approve the low bid as submitted by Smalley Construction Incorporated. It is requested that the commission authorize staff to enter into a contract and sign all necessary documents with Smalley Construction, the lowest responsible bidder as per the recommendation of Evan March. Staff recommendation to approve the low bid as submitted by Smalley Construction Incorporated in the amount of $147,400, and authorize staff to execute the contract and sign all documents related to the demolition of 510 Ottawa Street and 1875 Waterworks Road.
Thank you. Commissioner Hood?
I move to approve the low bid as submitted by Smalley Construction, Inc., in the amount of $147,400, and authorize staff to execute the contract and sign all documents related to the demolition of 510 Ottawa Street and 1875 Waterworks Road.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to approve the low bid as submitted by Smalley Construction, Inc., in the amount of $147,400, and authorize staff to execute the contract and sign all documents related to the demolition of 510 Ottawa Street and 1875 Waterworks Road. Any questions or comments? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I didn't mean to steal any of your thunder, Ms. Brubaker-Clark, if you wanted to. That's just fine. Well, thank you for being here. Item C?
Sappy Power Plant Implosion Request, Public Safety. Summary request. The Director of Public Safety requests that the city commission review and consider approval as it relates to the demolition of the Sappy Paper Plant Powerhouse Structure. Muskegon Public Safety personnel and city staff have been working with Melching Incorporated over the past several months to devise a plan for the demolition removal of the remaining power plant and smokestacks that are located on the south end of the property, 2400 Lake Shore Drive. This request is exclusive to the building known as the Powerhouse Structure. The stacks in question will be demolished at a later date to be determined. The plan for demolition is Sunday, October 27, 2013. Timeframes will be forwarded when received. Implosion of the structure will take place unless unforeseen conditions prohibit action. No alternate date has been selected at this time. The Melching overview, plan, and demolition contingency requirements are available for additional review and information. Staff recommendation, no recommendation on implosion action, approves plan to demolish and contingent requirements to promote public safety.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we approve the request contingent on all of the staff recommendations that were laid out before the requestor at our work session earlier this month.
Second. It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Wieringel, to approve plan to demolish. Contingent on the requirements and those recommendations or requirements of our staff to promote public safety. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to, I know there are people who want to talk about this, but there's two things I want to say. One, I think in the concern that people have on the future use of that site, that somehow we've kind of lopsided the fact that we've been really blessed. It's a terrible thing to lose an employer that generates as many good-paying jobs as, as the paper mill did over 100-plus years. And many communities are faced with a reminder of that, that rots away as a, as a hulk for decade after decade. And we have an opportunity, because of Mr. Melching stepping up and buying this property, that actually have this property in a position to be redeveloped for something positive for this community within about five years from the closing of the mill. And that's just astonishing. And I challenge anybody to go to other communities and see how long it usually takes to get to the process where we can see that, that finish line of the end of the old use and the beginning of a new year's take place. So I really want to thank the owner of the property and the hard work that's been done to make this property available for something positive going forward, and instead of having a reminder of the jobs lost and a blight on our shoreline. The second thing I want to say is that I listened to this presentation. I see the approvals that have to be required before action can be taken, and I'm not an expert, but I'm satisfied that this is probably the safest way to remove this major structure. And the structure has to be removed. We can't leave it there. They made a compelling case that trying to do it by mechanical means would place workers in danger, and I, I think that's unacceptable. So I, I think this is a reasonable way to go. If they meet through, and they've been published in the, in the newspaper and available online, if they go through and meet those criteria, I think this will be a very reasonably safe for what we're doing, which is demolishing a huge structure for this community and get us moving forward into the future on this site. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Markowski?
This is just in relation to the contingent requirements that we discussed at the work session, which are clearly lined out. There are 18 of them, you know, so there are certainly great links to which must be accomplished before this can happen. But I don't recall if we discussed what documentation we will be given, that these have been completed before this happens. I know that some of these items, while they're listed as being contingent, may not have occurred thus far, and so I just want to be sure that we will have record that they have been prior to the date of demolition.
Understood.
Okay.
Anyone else? I do have two individuals that would like to speak to the issue, and allow you to speak to them now. Mr. Mills?
No, I'm going first. He's got to get out of here. No. He's not going to talk. I'm not going to talk.
Okay. Mr. Nye? These are the only two that I have on the, on the issue. I don't have a third.
We in public comment now?
No, but it, it speaks to the issue, so I thought we'd allow it at this point.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners and Manager. And basically, I only had one real, I'm Roger Nye, by the way, 1495 Westwood Circle, Norton Shores, Michigan, 49441. And I just had one real concern had to do with public safety and the, in the matter of asbestos, believed to be located on the Sappy site, that this will, in fact, be addressed before the demolition. And number two, we're concerned about whether the Melching Company has sufficient insurance coverage in the event that the implosion of the building causes, let's say, a small earthquake, which would shake the glacial till that the lakeside neighborhood is built on, and might cause some damage to local buildings. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can I answer this? We have a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wieringel?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Question before I come back to my, now, this recommendation is, is posed an action approval plan to demolish and contingent requirement to promote public safety. Okay, now, are they talking about using explosives?
Yes.
Okay.
Just like in our, our work sessions.
Because I actually, I didn't, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I voted no the first time on it, and I'm still against any type of explosives or anything being used for this project. So no for me.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you. We have an additional item?
Summer Request. This is a request to name Conference Room 203 of City Hall, the Brian L. Mize Conference Room, in recognition of his 19-plus years of serving as city manager, the second longest sitting city manager for the City of Muskegon. Staff recommendation to approve naming Conference Room 203 the Brian L. Mize Conference Room.
And if you don't like that, we can put it on the broom closet.
Well, since we're all looking at each other, I'll force the issue. I'll move that we approve that recommendation.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Waringo, to name Conference Room 2003. That's on the 10th floor of City Hall, the Brian L. Mize Conference Room, in recognition of his 19-plus years of serving as city manager, and we passed by, just give a little bow. Any questions, comments? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Absolutely, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you all. That's very nice. Appreciate it.
Any other business by the Commissioners? Vice Mayor?
Well, I think we all have one topic on our mind, but you may have some comments yourself, so I would defer to you, if you want to have, perhaps start that discussion.
I'll follow up.
Okay. Well, as we all know, we had a tragic incident of violence in our community this weekend. Three young people are dead. We need to think long and hard about what the best way to address that is. Sometimes, when you're in a community like ours, you focus on so narrowly what's going on in your own community, and you forget that you're part of a larger context. And for whatever reason, in our society today, we have too many people who resort to deadly violence to settle disputes. Not even a week ago, two middle-aged men driving on the highway pull off and have a Wild West shootout at a car wash. This is not limited to any age group, or gender group, or ethnicity. Here, we have to address what we see in our own community and use the tools that are available to us to address this level of violence. We've been doing a lot of things that are having a positive impact, and I think we need to reassess everything we do and continue those things that are making a positive impact, things that we need to do differently, we need to be willing to do differently. And if, as this investigation continues, this location, which has had a number of other instances in the past, was a contributor to what's happened, then I would be willing to take the same action here as we have with other businesses that have not been responsible holders of liquor license in the past. I think we're going to have a long heartfelt discussion as a community on what we need to do to get young people focused in a way where they don't resort to guns to settle whatever the disputes are. It's just unacceptable to have violence in a civil society, and we need to figure out how we need to address this. I think we've done a lot of good things, but we need to do more, obviously. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other of the Commissioners? Commissioner Markowski?
Well, I just want to jump in regarding, you know, the location of the incident. While that may or may not have played a factor, I want to be very clear, it certainly was not the cause of the incident. And I think that we need to be very careful when assuming that one piece of action is necessarily going to eliminate the problem. I certainly don't feel that's the case. It may certainly contribute to working towards a solution to the problem, and I'm certainly willing to review anything that we might come up with as helpful. But I also feel like this is really coming from a cultural issue that we have in our community. It's very widespread and something that we really need to focus on, on that problem to a greater length than simply the location of an incident. And I really feel that it requires our citizens to be more engaged with these problems, even if they're uncomfortable, with their neighbors, and that they need to be willing to speak when something untoward happens, so that we can keep everyone else safe. Every once in a while, we have to step out of our comfort zone and be brave, and I would ask that of folks who have any information that they need to share.
Well, put Commissioners. Vice Mayor? Commissioner Hood?
I'd like to add that I agree that we can't be hasty in our decision. I think we need to know all the facts, and if indeed the lodge was a contributor, and we have had a rash of violence, not only at that location, but in several locations throughout the county. So I just think that we, yes, do need to think long and hard and have more information at our disposal before we make a decision.
Commissioner German?
And just to reiterate on what some of the Commissioners and the Vice Mayor stated, I myself, I am open to hearing, you know, what the results of this investigation will be, and also, my condolences go out to the parents, you know, the siblings of the ones who have lost their children. This could have happened anywhere. You know, we're a huge community of 38,000, and this does not exclude anyone. I mean, we really need to tone and pull together as a community. And right now, I think the community needs to be healed and bond together. So right now, you know, we're in a healing process, but we need to come up with answers and solutions, and, you know, dignitaries and, you know, pastors and anyone that can come together to try to help, you know, guide these children and redirect them because they're lost, you know? And like I said, this could happen anywhere. So I just want to let that be known, and anything that I could do to help out or give advice or try to give input to help guide, you know, solution and work with the police department, you know, we really need to step up and like Commissioner Markowski said, you know, step out of their comfort zone. And it is, we owe this to our children. I mean, because they are the future. And if we don't, we'd have failed as a community, as adults, and we just really owe this to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We mourn our dead and the loss of our young adults. And now, as Commissioner German says, it's time to bind together as friends and neighbors, as a community, to move forward and to continue to build the positive things that are this community. The investigation will continue, and we'll get to the bottom of it, and we'll determine who perpetrated this evil, and they will have to face justice for it. We'll continue on with the excellent programs we have put into place, the good police work that was done the evening of the horrible tragedy and before that. We'll continue on with our interaction in the Social Justice Committee, which is our police chief, prosecuting attorney, members of the local clergy, other police agencies, in reaching out and providing a opportunity for youngsters that are getting into trouble to enter into a more holistic address of their bad behavior. We'll continue, as a city, to provide our partnership in youth programming through the summer times and the winter time, but we need to continue to reinvent ourselves as a people, not just from what we provide from a government level, but we are providing ourselves within our own households. So the challenge is on all of us, to become better citizens, and better people, and better neighbors, and to interact with civility and with love. And we're going to need a whole heck of a lot of love right now. But that's okay, because I know we have it in our hearts. So let's all stand up and join together and make this house, Muskegon, truly a home. And I know there's a separation of church and state, but let's all get down on our knees tonight and every morning and ask for that grace to move forward. Mr. Manager?
I have a Mr. Harold Wally that would like to address us. Can you represent Lake Hawks Basketball, sir?
Yes.
Please, if you would just give your name and address.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, and Commissioners, thank you. My name is Harold Wally, and I am the CEO of a new startup American Basketball Association franchise called the West Michigan Lake Hawks. The West Michigan Lake Hawks will be calling Muskegon their home base for our 2013-2014 season. I've been the Vice President of Strategic Development for the American Basketball Association, the ABA, for the last five years. The ABA prides itself as the largest professional sports organization in the United States, with over 100 teams set to play in our 2013-14 season. We're happy to choose Muskegon as our home base. Muskegon will be to the Lake Hawks as New York City is to the Harlem Globetrotters, meaning we will be playing throughout West Michigan, but our home base will be in Muskegon. We're expected to play a full 30-game season this year with 15 home games and 15 away games. A majority of our home games, up to eight, will be played in Muskegon area, with the remainder of the home games being played throughout West Michigan to include Holland, Grand Rapids, Kalamazoo, Lansing, and all over our 2013-14 season. As the CEO of the Lake Hawks, my background prior to basketball includes spending 11 years as a U.S. Navy Gulf War veteran. My job was a radar operator, and I had the blessing to work with the internet before it was the internet. And after early retirement in '94, I ventured into the entertainment industry, touring as a vocalist with music legends Patti LaBelle, Al Green, Ike Turner, and many more. As a sign producer, I've worked with some great hip-hop legends in the business. Awarded the San Diego Music Award in 1999, and the Artist of the Millennium by Black Entertainment Television in 2000, I've been instrumental in helping launch the careers of Destiny Child, which is Beyonce, Mary Mary, Jennifer Hudson, American Idol, and many other current superstars. My technical background from the military has afforded me the ability to stay on the cutting edge of technology. I maintain the online radio station since 1999, and it can be heard on Apple as a selected featured station on iTunes on anyone's computer across the world. The station is KHDB Radio, and it caters to 1 million listeners a day. The global station will be used to help promote the West Michigan Lake Hawks and the City of Muskegon. The Lake Hawks' general manager is Walter Love. He was drafted in the 6-4-and-under World Basketball League as an offspring of the NBA in the early '80s. Mr. Love also has an extensive background in radio and television over the past 35 years. He's acted in movies with the likes of Eddie Murphy and was slated to host the iconic television show Soul Train. Mr. Love was general manager, previous general manager of an ABA team in Oklahoma. Mr. Love resides in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, where he actively works in basketball and an avid community activist, where he was narrowly defeated as city alderman in the last election. He travels frequently between Muskegon and Milwaukee on the Lake Express ferry. Our assistant GM, Mr. Jeffrey Burris, is a Muskegon native. Mr. Burris has been instrumental in putting together the relationship between the Lake Hawks and the City of Muskegon. Mr. Burris will be assisting Mr. Love in all basketball operation and has a very respectable presence in the Muskegon community. When not performing basketball duties, Mr. Burris works for the City of Muskegon. The Lake Hawks' coach is Larry Lisette. Mr. Lisette was a former coach of Loyola Marymount. He has also coached several NBA Development League teams and boasts an impeccable win-loss record. I have one of the only teams in the whole entire ABA that will have a road to the NBA. He has used his experience to help ABA teams maintain stellar records, and we believe he will be a, we will be competitive on a championship level with him at the helm this season. Our assistant coach, Mr. Ron Jenkins, is also a Muskegon resident, and we will be assisting Mr. Lisette, and judging by his past successes in the City of Muskegon, is more than capable of helping to bring a championship team to this area. Mr. Jenkins is a former coach of the Muskegon Community College Jayhawks. He has helped to bolster community support among youth sports in the area, and we're excited to have him as part of the team. Mr. Lee Gilbert, who needs no introduction, as he holds the title of Muskegon Area Sports Hall of Fame and Michigan Sports Hall of Fame, will serve as the Lake Hawks' Vice President of Player Personnel. Mr. Gilbert brings his undeniable knowledge to the team and solidifies the direction of being able to bring a championship to the West Michigan area. Funding for the Lake Hawks, thus, has been done through private funding. We're looking to engage the community for help with funding efforts to make this a successful venture. Our plan, November is American Basketball Association's start of the 2013-14 season. This season will provide an excellent opportunity for Muskegon to demonstrate its support for professional sports, community activism through sports, and to support numerous sports-minded individuals who are working with the Lake Hawks and are pillars of the community. Moreover, it's a wonderful opportunity to employ various Muskegon residents and community leaders to be involved with a major semi-professional sports franchise. The West Michigan Lake Hawks will be honored if you would support our official proclamation to recognize this team. Your proclamation would lend official recognition to the important work of educating the public on basketball fitness, community service, basketball camps, as well as emphasize your personal commitment to supporting this venture. The goal of the West Michigan Lake Hawks is to instill pride in the area through a respectable, winning basketball program and to help to offer alternatives to West Michigan youth in an effort to thwart high school dropouts, reduce youth violence, and crime over time. All of the basketball players on the Lake Hawks team will be contractually required to provide an allocated amount of their time to give back to the community by involving themselves in community programs. Reading programs at grade schools, Habitat for Humanity Support, Boys and Girls Club, and already established programs in the community will be targeted. Lake Hawks in Flight, the West Michigan Lake Hawks will sponsor its own community support program titled Lake Hawks in Flight. Lake Hawks in Flight will be a community program aimed at giving youth unique alternative outlets that may not be readily available in the West Michigan area. All registered kids from ages 5 to 17 will be eligible for this program. We'll be conducting fun edutainment courses that will cater to educating kids on useful skills through edutainment. The courses will consist of basketball skills, music, acting, radio broadcasting, performing, and light politics. Our decorated staff has a combined 100-plus years of experience in sports, music, television, movies, radio, and entertainment. We will be reaching out to community organizations that have an interest in the entertainment industry, and we will be inviting high-profile experts, actors, singers, entertainment industry execs, and local politicians who we have established relationships with over the years to come to West Michigan, to volunteer their time and knowledge to participating West Michigan youth involved in the Lake Hawks in Flight program. By employing Muskegon and other West Michigan residents, we feel that we can help to put a positive face on sports, entertainment, and youth politics, as well as promote the area in an effort to drive tourism to the beautiful area of West Michigan in the off-season tourism season. We want to help local businesses maintain a healthy income throughout the winter months. We would like to thank you for your time and look forward to your support and help.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I might suggest, I could put you in contact with one of our staffers who is still in the room. Good evening, Ms. Brubaker-Clark, once again. If you can make contact with our planning director, then we can move forward with consideration of the statement of support.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Some questions from Commissioner? Commissioner Hood?
No question. I just wanted to make that proposal to support the new ABA team, West Michigan Lake Hawks Basketball League in Muskegon.
I'd second that. So, hopefully, they can meet with staff and get something for us to vote on.
Very good.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Just another comment. You know, I commend you guys for bringing this to the city of Muskegon. It's definitely needed, you know, youth, you know, to give them something positive to look forward to. And so many of them, you know, drop out and either graduate from high school and leave because there's nothing here to look forward to. So, hopefully, this would be the platform that will keep them engaged and keep them motivated and positive. So, I appreciate that and I thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Well, gentlemen, we look forward to your success.
Thank you so much.
And we'll be seeing you again. Take care.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Yeah, Commissioner Hood made a motion to, so... Yeah, that's what you're... Yeah, because I seconded.
Commissioner Makowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galaran?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Marango?
Yeah.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Do you have Ms. Foster and Mr. Horton? If you wanted to address issues regarding violence in Muskegon? Robert Campbell?
Yes.
And if you just give your name and address and you're allowed it three minutes.
My name is Diane Foster. My address is 135 Ottawa Street. I'm the owner of Diane's Compassion Service. I came up to talk to you about the situation over the weekend. First, I want to give my condolences to the families who lost children in this matter. I would like the mother of Jalisa to know that she was not alone or cold. My husband and my daughter were with her. They covered her up. They said a blessing for her and they have a message for her parents and her sister. You want people to come up here and talk about what's going on in the community as far as what they know. Well, I know we've had two shootings that have had not good results. We've also had two shootings that nobody seems to know about. There's been four shootings since June at that corner. Two, we were very grateful and lucky that there were no casualties, but they still occurred. And I want there to be on record that there has been four shootings since June 16th, I believe it is, Our youth need something better to do than to hang around at 2:00 in the morning on a street they have no business at when they're 19 and 20 years old. This is not a place 19- and 20-year-olds belong at in the first place. Not anybody under 21 should be nowhere near there at that time of night. And I'm not going to go into every detail about this particular lodge, but it is definitely not a good thing in our community. And you guys want to bring good things in the community, but you have to get rid of some of the bad things in our community to make the good things matter. I don't think my family will ever be the same after this weekend. I've been trying to prevent this all summer, just so you all know. I have tried everything I could to prevent this and the outcome is still here. I want to ask God to please give us all the right direction here, to ask Heavenly Father to bring healing to this community and to let everyone know that we all suffer in these situations. It doesn't matter where we came from or what nationalities we are. We are all part of the same community. The children are what matter in this community and they matter in all communities. And as a nation, we're failing our youth. I spend a lot of time in my business teaching these young people that come in to be entrepreneurs to... And I have, actually, there are a few young men in our area that have become entrepreneurs that I've helped with. And I am really proud of them and I think a lot more could come by this. And I'm speaking for an organization, not one person. I think I deserve more than three minutes here. I've put up with an awful lot here and I care an awful lot here. I care about this community. I've been here almost four years now and I would really like to see some good come out of what we're doing here. So, if you want to add the good, you have to get rid of some of the bad. And this is a bad egg we have at the corner. Thank you.
Thank you. And you join many others that love this community and will work very hard to maintain it and recreate it. Mr. Campbell? This is regarding the towing contract, sir?
Yes.
Just a simple letter expressing a thing.
If I could just have your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Robert Campbell, 796 Apple Avenue. I got a simple letter expressing a things on the next city contract. I don't know who I handed to you. It's kind of a long form. You can just read at your leisure. You don't have to read it now. Just, you know, our three local city record companies that came together and put together a letter for you. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. I'm sorry. Phyllis Watson-Laudermil?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Phyllis Watson-Laudermil, 2964 Lectura Drive, President of NAACP. Long day. It's amazing what God had to do to bring this to our attention. It's been months of dying, people getting shot from Wood Street to Sherman Street to 7th Street, Ottawa Street, Chicken Coop. I've been here ever since I was, what, 14, Mr. Gilbert? I've never been afraid to go to Chicken Coop in my life. And you are so right, Leah. It has nothing to do about the building. It's about the people that go into the building. And yes, I'm sure that there are many things you have to investigate and we need to do our due diligence. We need to find out what we do wrong. But at the end of the day, it's a much bigger picture than what went into the building and what came out of the building. The activity, the children, the places they don't have to work, youth, it's a long, long history of things. And so, when you come into a city and you look at how dysfunctional we are, that's what kids do. They act just like dysfunctional children. We don't talk together. We don't meet until we have to meet. Remember what we met at Muskegon High School Public Schools, Leah? Remember the conversations? That stopped. People came only because it was urgency. So, today I was with DJ and this is what I said. I wonder what would happen if the perpetrator had to spend a night in jail. What conversation do you think these kids are hearing? What happens when you go around a casket? What are they hearing? Look at us. We like longevity. We want to do health. We want to live for a long, long time. We don't even want to get old. So, what happened to our youth that they think the only way out is to die? So, if you're going to have the conversation, let's have it freely and openly. Don't miss out nothing. And it's so unfortunate. I got the call, matter of fact, at 4:00 in the morning. I'm at state conference. And I decided to come back home because, you know, I got a whole story. But it's not about my story. It's about our story. But I didn't want any of us to sit here and think that we don't have dirty hands. I didn't want any of us to think that this is not just our responsibility too. I did not want anyone to think that it was just about the Elks, what goes on in the Elks, because the same activity goes on all over this city. So, if it took that young lady to die in your arms, then maybe somebody had some compassion for God. You know what? I wish that had happened a lot sooner. It's crazy out there. Prayer without worship is in vain. I talked to pastors today. I said, you know, we got to keep talking about church and not doing what we're supposed to do. Commissioners, we got to quit talking about what happens when we go home and it's safe. You got to come back out here? This is a beast out here. These kids aren't afraid to die. That's a scary thought. They're not going to just kill each other. Next time, it just may be you. They're not afraid to die. So, that's the reason why I decided to come tonight. I'm not saying that things that we do are always right and that they're not always sometime wrong. I'm saying take a look at your responsibility. Let's be accountable and let's get about our business because this is hurting everybody. And you have a good one.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of our public comment, except I think we have one member of the public... Mr. Mizeade?
I'd like to use the podium if you don't mind.
Name and address?
Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Brian Mizeade and for the last 24 years, I feel like I have resided at 933 Terrace Street. As you know, as we went through the meeting, it's been obvious that this is my last city commission meeting with all of you and prior to my retirement from the city of Muskegon. And so, I'd like to make a few brief comments if you will indulge me. And I will be brief, I promise. Most important, I want to take this time to give thanks and appreciation. I truly have appreciated the opportunity to serve the citizens of the city of Muskegon for the past 24-plus years. I'm particularly thankful to this city commission and past city commissions for allowing me to serve as the Muskegans, as Muskegon City Manager. I have really enjoyed that, enjoyed doing so. I'm particularly thankful to the current and past city staff that I've been so fortunate to work with. I must say that I am truly amazed every day at what they can accomplish and all of you should be proud of what they do. Trying to keep my composure. Most importantly, though, I want to thank my family for their support. I certainly appreciate their caring and understanding for the demands of the job. And lastly, but not least, I know that after I leave here, I will always look back fondly on my time serving the city of Muskegon. Thank you.
Commissioner Hood, do you have something to say?
Yes. I motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Godspeed, Mr. Mizeade.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good evening, everyone.